Then we're now in the hands of our capable city clerk, Ms. Lisa Carroll.
This is the meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, January 28th. We have approval of minutes from January the 14th.
And the issues, anyone? Okay.
Appeals, we have request for wave of the noise ordinance on January 31st from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM in Cathedral Square, March 22nd from 5:00 to 5:30 in Washington Square. And on February 1st, from 6:00 PM until 1:00 AM on Dolphin Street.
Councilman Carroll, anything? You good? Good, Madam Clerk.
Public hearings today, it's a public hearing to declare the structure at 325 East I-65 Service Road South a public nuisance in order it demolished or secured and secured.
Mr. Dolphin Ball, you got some information on this?
Yeah, good morning, Mr. President. Mr. Davis, I do want to give you an update. About a year ago, we had this on our agenda, and it was declared a public nuisance with a demolition order. Regretfully, we progressed to the point where the owner did apply for a demolition permit, but they did not take any action. What they did is they sold the property right about the time the permit expired. So we now have a new owner, which is here today, and we, well, it's noticed today. The new company, the three, the new corporation we serve noticed, and we're ready to move forward with another demolition declaration of a public nuisance. So we can move forward if they do not.
This is the property at Springdale?
That is correct. And if you remember, this is the out parcel that Mr. French came down and spoke about, which I expect him here this morning to give another update. This is the property that was damaged about 11 years ago with the two tornadoes that we had at the Christmas time. The north, I'm sorry, yeah, the north part of the building has roof damage and exterior wall damage, which does comply with the demolition order. Now, that building has been vacant since the tornadoes, 11 years now, 12, going on 12. The south, I'm sorry, the north, the south part of it.
Paint that the people that are coming down today are going to object to this?
No, I expect Mr. French to be here, who is the complainant. He owns property to the north, and he will probably give another update of his concerns. But there's also a change of concerns. He's seeing migratory homeless people.
It's way past time we dealt with this. Agree.
Yes, and our position is to move forward with the declaration notice.
Madam Clerk?
Today is a public hearing to fix costs for demolition of structures at 2257 Clinton Street, 1312 Jesse Street, 1306 Congress Street, 727 Florida Street Extension, 550 William Street, 1160 Arlington Street, 2154 Grove Court, 3154 Riverside Drive, 7217 Third Street, 7151 13th Street. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Derek Bullware, providing information about the annual point in time count, Housing First, and Project Homeless Connect. Curvin Lane, questions regarding Mardi Gras safety on Parade Route D for Lundigrau.
One minute, Madam Clerk. Councilman Carroll, are you familiar with that?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with it. There's been probably two or three requests from the community, which I forwarded up the line, I want to say, a month or so ago, asking that we properly secure MLK during the Lundigrau parade. I think the response was is that when the rails are down and they're at the curb, that we're actually in people's yards and that the rails have to come out a little bit further during the parade route and all those things. But when you look at the pictures of years gone by, the constituent base and the revelers are actually out up against the floats in some cases. I know that our public servants and our police department do the best they can to make sure that we control the crowd and make it as safe as possible and do everything that we can do to make it safe. But the people in the community are seeing it from a different point of view. They're seeing individuals almost on top of the floats during that parade. A lot of us ride that parade either with our own organizations or with the city or in individual cars, and you know, we kind of see that too. But that's a very big parade with a probably, no, it's not the, this is the Lundigrau Monday. It's probably the largest attended parade in the city at this point in time when it comes to people because of the, I guess, the density of the area, which we're trying to get the parade through. So if we could at 10:30 have or ask public safety, and I don't know if Lieutenant Angle could come down, but just to discuss whatever plan that we've put in place to help make this process a little bit safer during the Mardi Gras parading season. I know we all want to be safe. I know we all want to do a better job at it. But the biggest thing is now is to make sure that the people in the city are safe from any unintended, any unintended consequence caused by themselves or accidental adjustments that happen when we're beyond the barricades where we're supposed to be. So if we could ask that response at 10:30, it would help a lot. And to make sure that we get our response out to the public so that they know what we're doing at the same time, too. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Apostle Valena Green, provide answer to administration's response to her comments about nepotism and abuse of power. Reggie Hill, Section 2-62 of the City Code, Public Safety, Civic Center, Budgeting and Abuse of Power. Melissa Gates, Transparency Related to YouTube Live Streaming of Meetings, Respect of Citizens Addressing the Council and Abuse of Power.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Boyce. So just for clarification, as far as when it comes to the YouTube streaming, down in Council Chamber, I mean, that's a county run. Okay, just putting it out there.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Penney, Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, President Small. Yeah, my next question regarding the YouTube livestream. And we had stated that it was technical difficulties last week. Is that correct?
Yes, it was an issue with YouTube. It wasn't an issue with the equipment in the county. So sometimes the Wi-Fi is not kicking in, sometimes it kicks off. But the equipment in the auditorium belongs to Mobile County, not the City of Mobile. We didn't spend any money purchasing microphones or cameras in the auditorium of Government Plaza.
Thank you so much.
Vice President and Mr. Carroll?
No, I mean, that was it because we had gotten some criticisms about our live streaming and that somebody was saying it always goes out, you know, just a lot of criticism. So we wanted to find out and make sure that everybody understands how live streaming is done or is not done and what the equipment actually is. So I appreciate the details there, Lisa.
How many complaints are we getting?
Just, it's mostly social. Because when Ashley puts something on social media saying we're having technical difficulties, then that kicks in a stream of people criticizing us for our lack of ability to livestream.
Is livestreaming mandatory?
No.
No.
So it's not mandatory. And if I remember right, Gina, I can't recall the exact year, but wasn't it 2012 or 2010 that past Councilman Richardson said, well, we might want to do a little bit better job now since we have cameras and instead of recording the meeting on tape, said, well, let's just go a little bit step further and put it on the internet for ease and convenience. So in doing our public, our public service and being public service and good ones, we decided to do and put this on the internet and make it livestreamed. It wasn't necessary and it's not mandatory that it be out there. But it's another public service that we're providing for the public so that they can actually see what's going on. So when we talk about transparency, we've been in our being as responsible as we can, but even at the utmost, we've been extremely transparent at what we're doing. So I commend us and committed to past councils for doing that. But it wasn't a mandatory thing that these be transmitted over YouTube. Secondly, and I mentioned this to y'all last week, the constant statement of abuse of power and people coming to speak to us about abuse of power. If there's an abuse of power or some illegal action that they foresee or see us doing, then they need to state what that abuse is. And it needs to then go to our city attorney to see if it's something that needs to be mandated and put on the council and brought to the council's attention. If they are not outlining what the abuse is, it doesn't belong on our agenda for open comment. And if that requires a rule change, then I suggest that we do it because the statement abuse of power now has gone beyond anything that this council is trying to do in a business in which we're trying to take up on that day. It's just adding fodder to our council meetings and some of it's getting out of control. So if it requires a rule change, then I would suggest that we make that rule change and change the rules in our presentations to the council.
Mr. Proctor?
Mr. Davis?
I find myself in complete agreement with Councilman Carroll on this issue.
It's gonna be a long day. Get ready.
I go back to, and Councilman Carroll made some good points. We are far more transparent than we are required to be, which is fine. I'm delighted with that. I'm delighted with that. We're not required to allow, you know, legislative bodies in this country are not required to allow citizens to come in and speak to them. You can't go speak to the Alabama Legislature. You can't go speak to Congress whenever you want to. We allow citizens to do that because there's a long historical record of municipal governments, city councils particularly, allowing the citizens to speak. It's been going on since the country was founded. It's a great institution. The other part of that is that, is that the city council and people who have legitimate concerns about the city council, that they can, that they can vote, people who have legitimate concerns, we welcome them to come down and offer criticism. But to make these broad statements of abuse of power and so forth is not appropriate, absolutely not appropriate. We shouldn't allow it. They shouldn't do it.
Mr. President, let me take this one, one step further, especially with you legal guys in the room. Abuse of power states an allegation of wrongdoing to the council, which means there has, there has been a wrong done. And if there's a wrong done, then it should be filed in the proper legal way, period. So if there's a wrong done or an abuse of power that has been done, then let them file it legally and bring it to this council or take it to the proper authority.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is held over 6400. I did. 64001, consider rezoning property located at 5301 Moffett Road from B2 to B3.
Mr. President?
Ms. Gardner?
This is one that we are still working with the developers, engineer, as well as residents. The snow week put everybody behind a little bit. So I'm going to ask that we, let's just lay this over for two weeks and maybe that will give us time to get everything finished up.
64002, consider the modification of a previously approved PUD for property located at 6301 Grellat Road. Consent resolutions held over 401118, declare the structure at 4350 Moffett Road a public nuisance in order it demolished and secured.
Mr. Dolphin Ball?
Yes, sir, Mr. President and Mr. Penn. Just a brief update. About 60 days ago, this was on the agenda and it was held over. There was some discussion of possible ownership change, and that's still occurring. However, I don't have a date presented to me of when that's going to finalize. But we are looking at redeveloping this. But until that happens, I would like to go forward with the partial demolition of some of the hanging HVAC units and then secure the building until the final transition of the ownership occurs.
Okay. Thank you.
58048, authorize removal of lease group 1662. Resolutions held over 01057, authorize agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for traffic management and signal operations for traffic signals. 08058, approve purchase order to Callio 2009 for annual renewal of investigation software. 21060, authorize contract with Potico Rentals for Mardi Gras portable toilets. 25061, accept an easement for recreational purpose for Segment 2 of the Three Mile Creek Greenway Trail Project. 47062, waive fee for vacation of an alley adjacent to property located at Dolphin Heights and Uplum Street. 50063, exempt all proceeds from the sale and use of hearing instruments from the city's sale and use tax in conformity with Alabama Code, Section 40-23-4A 55.
Ms. Gardner?
Do we have any estimates on what this amount would be if we approve this? What the, what the proceeds from this would be that the city would not be receiving? Any idea?
I don't know, but I'll give the finance.
If there's a way to separate that out and give you an idea, I think it's going to be very minimal, though.
Not opposed to it, I'm just curious because I know this is a state effort that now we are proposed to mirror that. And I'm just curious as to what that would mean to our budget, if anything, much.
I'll see if we can extract it. I'm not sure we can, but the, as an item, but if we can, we'll give you that number. But again, I think it's just a fraction of our revenues.
And I think I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago. There is another bill that's already been filed to do the same sort of thing for eyeglasses. So we may be seeing a number of things like this come before us in the future.
That's correct. You probably will.
Yeah.
6064, authorize settlement agreement and release of claims. Ordinance is being introduced.
Mr. President, before we move forward, I left 1602 Congress Street out. Some of the things I wanted to say this morning. 1602 Congress Street is a shotgun house, narrow property in the heart of the area that we are eyeing. We have been fighting for revitalization now for three years. When that house comes down, all we're going to have is a vacant lot of a size that we cannot put anything back on because of the size of the lot. The UDC encumbers revitalization of that area because of the size of the properties that these houses were built on. At the time these houses were built, the neighborhood was built with what money that they could afford to build on at that time. And because of the tax structure in the city, houses were not built wide because you were taxed by the frontage of the property and not by the abhorment itself. So now, once we start doing this again and taking down, one, this historic structure, but others in that neighborhood, we're putting ourselves in a spot that we cannot revitalize these neighborhoods on the lots that are there because the UDC prevents us from doing it. So I'm going to ask again that we revisit the UDC and we change this so that we can revitalize our neighborhoods because right now we cannot do it and we won't be able to get into the property density and the single-family density that we'd need to with the existing lots that we have. And even if we take down the one next to it, we still can't get there because of the size of lots and the requirement that's set forth by the UDC. So if we're going to do this right and revitalize neighborhoods, then we need to start changing that now to make it appropriate for us to get the proper houses back up. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is being introduced, 65003, fix the mayor's annual salary. 34004, ordinance to amend Article 6 of Chapter 34 Lodging Tax of the Code of the City of Mobile.
Mr. President?
Ms. Reynolds?
I'd like to hear from the airport authority making this request prior to us voting on it. I know we had a meeting scheduled with them, but I'd like to hear from them before we, you know, take a vote on this one.
So the airport authority is not here. We're not voting today.
Do we, do we have a meeting scheduled? I know we had had to postpone. What is the date on that?
Yes, this one. March the 11th.
All right. So we're not scheduled to hear from them until March 11th?
Yes.
Can we move it up, possibly change it around since this has appeared on our agenda? And we probably would like to hear from them sooner rather than later? Any way to do that?
Something that we had to ask them in the search and could it be done?
Yeah. Well, or maybe we can just rearrange some of these.
Yeah, the issue with that timeline is that the lodging tax issue is one that we need to move on in an expedited basis because it syncs up with the TID renewal as well. These two ordinances are going to go hand in hand. You'll see at the end of your agenda, you have a public hearing set up next week regarding the renewal of the TID. And both of these ordinances were crafted so that they were moved together to focus on tourism dollars, decreasing tourism and supporting the growth of tourism.
A question on the, on the TID and the lodging tax as well. Will it just continue on until we renew it like so many things do? Or does it have a, it does have a definite sunset? It sunsets when?
May 31st.
Okay, exactly. I just didn't hear the date.
May 31st this year.
May 31st? And so...
And they have a hearing that they have to have a minimum of 70 days before that day. And that's why the hearing has to go forward next week.
Okay, so you've timed it all out to?
The timeline is been timed out. I don't want to speak to that specifically, but that has to do with the TID. And part of the renewing of the TID and the discussions that we've been having with Visit Mobile and the Mobile Hoteliers, a factor in that is the lodging tax piece. So lodging tax piece, we are battling this, we're moving along with the TID ordinance. And remember, the lodging tax ordinance, we have to, it cannot go into effect until a minimum of 60 days after it's passed based on the Department of Revenue regulations. So we're, we have a two to three week window here. We don't have more than two months.
How about, how about if we met with, if they could meet with us on February 11th? Is that too late?
That's a Finance Committee meeting, so maybe we just do it within the Finance Committee.
Yeah, Council, I'm looking at this agenda, and again, this is the first read. What about next Tuesday morning at 8:00?
It suits me.
And objections against that? Reynolds?
I have no objection to that.
Carol?
None, but I do want to go back when you get a chance.
All right. Reynolds and Carroll?
Help me understand why the TID and this, this is linked together? They seem totally separate to me.
They're in the backbone of our tourism ministry and how we fund tourism.
Well, we're up against a hard deadline on the TID. We know that, that that's got to be renewed because it's going to sunset. But this, this 2%, we're not up against any sort of hard deadline on that.
Only extra 2%.
Yesterday, I was talking with Josh McCoy at PFM, getting prepared to talk to the rating agencies regarding the bond issue. So tomorrow, I have two meetings, one with S&amp;P, probably an hour and a half conversation, two hour conversation, and then have one for Moody's. During that conversation, we would like to be able to say that part of the lodging tax will be allocated toward the debt service of the Civic Center. Okay? So it's important, I think, for me to kind of get a feel if we're on solid ground, thinking that that is a good direction because I don't want to say it if it's not, okay? The airport is apart from the bonding aspect of what we're trying to do with part of the lodging tax. And so as long as we get it done before we have the conversations with, when we go to the bond market, and I say it that way, when we go to the bond market, it needs to be done before then.
I guess I just need to understand a little more about, you know, the implications of that, of going to the bond market, you know, how it helps us. Is this absolutely necessary that we do it? You know, those are the sort of the questions that I'm trying to answer.
Yeah, I would say that, that the funding streams for the debt service, you know, really, it's stuff that we've allocated out. I'll say it carved out of the general fund over a period of years, okay? But to the point that you can tie down and allocate a funding stream for debt service, it accrues to the benefit of the city when they're rating you, when they're giving you your rating. How it, how it impacts us, I don't know. But I specifically asked that question yesterday. Is this beneficial? And they said absolutely, so.
Excuse me. Did I just hear that the additional funds from the, the increase are going towards debt service at the Civic Center?
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Last week, we, maybe two weeks ago, we discussed the increase from the TID based on where we were now. And that, in that change, it showed a substantial increase in revenue above where we are now. And at that time, it was stated that that amount had not been allocated to, to anything. So, so is it still not allocated? Okay, so when, I guess I brought that to everyone's attention. Now, knowing that we have debt service to pay over the next four years, that's going to limit everything that we can do in this city. And we found a way to create additional revenue or additional revenue was being created for other things. Now we're going to turn around and redirect that additional revenue to debt service also. Is that what we're saying now? Because in that request, I remember asking you, could that additional revenue be put aside for the community being that our debt service was being stressed by the Civic Center debt service? So, but now we're saying that that money's not going to go to the community, but it's also going to be given to the debt service of the Civic Center, therefore limiting again what we're going to be able to do over the next four years.
The way you phrase it, that we're taking it away from the community, I don't know if that's, that's the way you phrase it, but that and how I look at it. The way I would look at it is, is that all the money's coming into the city and other funds that may be unencumbered will go to the community. But these funds would be allocated for debt service, which frees up other funds that can go to the community.
I guess what I'm asking is, is that number that you and I and Mr. Penn and Mr. Small discuss above and beyond, you're now telling me that those funds
That's right.
will be redirected as opposed to being directed towards other public services will now also go to debt service?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Does that shorten our debt service on the convention center? And I'm, excuse me, on the Civic Center? And if so, by what length of time? And then what benefit is that giving to the general public knowing that we have three hard years? And especially in year 27 through 30, which are going to be extremely hard? So how do we help ourselves, help the community when every ounce of what we're finding to benefit us is going towards the Civic Center? Is what I'm asking.
So today, we don't know what the cost of the Civic Center is, okay? Today, we don't know what the anticipated, what the amount that we will have to bond. This is something that we would have in our back pocket in case we're faced with a situation where the bids come in higher than what we, what we anticipate. And so what we're doing is pre-planning to be able to do that.
As I told you last week, I was all in favor of the increase. But I'm also in favor of making sure that we continue to have a way to do those little extra things in the public that we need to do also.
So until it's, until it's done, we can't show you a cash flow of how the monies will be allocated. The next three years are tight, okay? But, but this is money that really in the next three years, you know, would help with what we have going on with the debt service of the Convention Center.
Civic Center? I'm with you.
I'm happy to talk through the the ordinance as it's proposed, if you want, or we can we can dispense with that.
Would you please?
Yeah, well, and I think y'all have read it, right now, the the proposed ordinance revisions would raise the city's lodging tax by 2%, raising it from eight to 10. It would have a five year cap. If you look at our peer cities and cities in the region, that still puts us at or below our peers. It puts us in line with our peers. The lodging tax has not been increased in nearly 20 years. The other the other piece of this is that it increases the baseline funding for Visit Mobile from 33.5 to 37.5. And remember, we're going with the baseline coming into the city right now of 8 million. The revenue projections that y'all have seen, going back to your your point, really start to spike and it ties back into the arena. Once the arena is up and going, most of their projections you will see start to spike. The way the cash flow is set up is that the new dollars coming in, the first 3 million will be set aside to support the expansion efforts and relocation of commercial services at Brookly, getting more people in and out of the downtown International Airport. Anything above that, and that would be for 10 years, and then that will sunset. Anything above that 3 million for the first 10 years would be designated for supporting debt service to the new arena. From years 10 through 20, the the full amount would be dedicated towards the debt service, towards the arena. I know Scott is working on some projections to answer your question on how that will help reduce the overall term of the debt by being able to to have that additional revenue stream coming in, by have that revenue stream coming in. As we discussed, this is we have been in negotiations with this a good bit in terms of the overall increase with the with the hoteliers, with Hotel Group. That's why it's tied to the to the TID on how that's being renewed and extended because there are changes from aspects of that. And factors in how they changed aspects of that were were determined by how we were going forward with this lodging tax increase. So that's the proposal that you see. The amended ordinance, when you see the red line of it, it is fairly straightforward. It's increasing it by 2% and it is designating those funds, again, for the first 10 years, 3 million, first 3 million going to MAA, any excess going to service the debt of the arena. For years 10 through 20, the new money, excess money going to service the debt of the arena.
So so each additional dollar, let's just take each additional dollar that comes in. So of each additional dollar, the CBB gets 30 would get 37 and a half percent, 37 and a half cents off of that dollar, right?
That's correct. Their funding right now is at 33.5. This would increase it to 37.5.
37.5. So they get 37 and a half cents. Then the first 3 million after that would go to the airport. Right? So first you take out the so for each additional dollar, first you take out the 37 and a half.
Yes, sir. So I'll I'll explain just because there the 10% is made up of two components, the eight there's an 8% that we have today and the 2% addition that comes in. So if we're talking first on the 8%, as we have it today, that 8% comes in and 37 and a half percent of that would go to Visit Mobile. So that is a standalone 8% transaction that takes place. 8% comes in, they get 37%. We get 62.5. The other, what you have in front of you related to the 2%, the 2% would be separate from that. So that we would calculate that 2%. It comes in of the 2%, $3 million or the equivalent for the first.
Stop, Scott. So the the CBB is not going to get any of the additional 2%.
That is correct. That is correct. Of the 2%, 3 million would go to Mobile Airport.
That's not what the ordinance says. That is not what it says. And that's what I was talking about earlier. It does not say that.
Okay. And that's the and I think the projections that y'all have been running is based on how we we have it written.
I'm sorry, but I I just mentioned this, the ordinance does not say that. So I think all of this needs to be cleared up.
Back to your question.
No, I didn't answer the question.
Okay. Because I was starting to get an explanation and then I was told that 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 explanation was incorrect.
That's right.
So what I'm trying to so let's if you could explain what happens to the first 8% and then what happens to the new 2%.
Right, right now, the of the first 8%, out of that first 8%, 2% of that goes to the the convention facility, as it always has. 2% goes to the capital improvement fund, as it always has. The remaining 96% of that 8% or four fifths of the total, that's how we have the phrase we're using, goes to the general fund operating budget. Okay, so out of that 8% are now four fifths of the total 10%, 96% of that four fifths goes to general operating budget. 2% out of that goes to capital improvement fund, 2% goes to the convention facility. That's consistent with how that 8% has been divided up until now.
What is the where does the CBB money come from?
The CBB money comes in on the on the very front end of our allocation. When the dollars come in, and David, I'm talking about how your entity runs, so make sure we're getting this correct. When the dollars come in on the front end, their percent under contract goes to the CBB at that existing 33.5% figure. That's a cost. So that because we're not we're not we're not talking about what we're allocating here is how the funds are allocated within the city. The the cost item is paid out first to CBB because they're operating as a as a cost function in this.
So written, let's go through it again.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe I'm denser than everybody else at the table, but I'm having a hard time following it.
Okay.
So on the first 8%.
Yep.
The first thing that happens is the CBB gets 33%.
That's correct.
Then on the 67% that's left. On the 67% that's left of that 67, let's say it's $6,700. 2% of the $6,700 goes to the Convention Center and 2% of the $6,700 goes somewhere else, capital improvement. And the remaining part goes to the general fund.
That is correct.
What would change with respect to the 8 the 8% is the CBB portion would go to 37 and a half percent.
That's correct.
And then the remainder would be split as it's been split in the past.
Correct.
So the additional 2%, none of that would go to the CBB.
No, the the CBB would get their they would get 37.7% 37.5% of the total coming in.
Of the total 10%.
Of the total 10%. That's correct. Their budget will increase. Correct.
And then of the remainder, the first 3 million, first 3 million would go to the airport.
Out of out of the new 2%.
2%, right.
Correct.
Right.
And so.
What is the anticipated revenue from the 2%?
Scott, do you have a reference? Yeah, it does, because we allocate it by one fifths, one fifths of the total revenue versus.
Let me get an answer before you start jumping in. What what is the anticipated revenue from the 2%? I know, but that I know, I'm just let's get a number. It's just.
I think they could.
I know, I know, but I just want to understand it, William.
So somebody's glasses other than mine. Let's see, 2223, city total lodging tax at 8% was 11.186 million. Okay? In 202425, we're anticipating that the lodging tax is 13.78 million. Okay?
No, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on.
No, we haven't, we haven't passed yet. So the city's portion out of that would be 9.4 million and Visit Mobile would be 4.3 million.
How much will the additional 2% yield? I guess, I guess.
The 2% when it's when it kicks in in 2025 would increase that total city lodging tax to 16.7 million. So that's a $3 million increase. By 2029, it projects to be 21.5 million.
Okay, so if it's a $3 million increase and the C and the okay, and the CBB is getting 37 and a half, there's not going to be 3 million left over to go to the airport.
That's probably. Let me take a shot at it.
Yeah, it probably will, they probably will not get their first 3 million until the arena is online, the other hotels come on board. That's when you see the spike in the revenue going up.
I see.
So it will be it will be an increase over time. So the first year or two, they probably will not get their 3 million. Based on the projections that we've seen, you're really looking at more year three, year four, by year five, they will be getting their 3 million and it will be spinning off enough to drop on to the debt service for the arena.
But the allocation we've been talking about right now concurrently terminates after five years.
The no, the the earmark for the MAA is 10 years. The earmark in total for for MAA and the arena is 20 years, with it being arena only in years 10 through 20. And then then these earmarks go away and it all goes into the general fund because the lodging tax continues. I think what you're talking about on the five year renewal is the TID, which is the separate one.
Okay. Thank you.
Carol?
Um.
Dan Reynolds?
I was just hoping that that you guys would clear this up. And I'm still kind of not on the same page as you guys are. This is what happens when we get snowmaged and some of us have a whole lot of time to do a whole lot of reading. And I I think that we kind of need to clear this up before we go any further.
Let me let me try to take a shot at it. I think the and so this it's actually doesn't just jump 2% and it go on one, then 1.5 and then two.
Well, the the projections that you guys gave us were right. It showed it actually showed a a hibolic curve showing that in the first year, there's going to be a proration because of the time in which it was initiated. Years two, it was a spike and then a level off in a in a in a curve until the funds level off and then it shows an increase after a certain amount of years. That's why I asked about the excess revenue over where we were now in in the 3 million versus the 8 million at year, so I think it's at year 10. So those are the things that need to be cleared up because right now, what I'm what I've read based on what I've been given and shown, they don't match. So that's that's what we need to clear up right now.
Yeah. So some of the key points, I'm hoping to maybe make it more clearer, the 33 and a half percent of total lodging tax that goes to see the convention visitors bureau, that's what the current TID does. The new will get 37.5% of the total lodging tax. So as we incrementally raise the tax rate, lodging tax, 37 and a half percent goes to the convention visitors bureau. So we kind of modeled this similar to a TIF where you set this baseline of what the 8% does to the general fund and the capital. And then the excess, as we incrementally raise it and room nights start going up as the arena goes online, that excess is where the first 3 million would go to the airport authority for 10 years. The anything above that 3 million would go to debt service up to 20 years, or if there's a buyback earlier, then it would end there. And soon as that buyback happens or the debt is retired on the arena, that money goes to the general fund to be distributed, just like the 8% is now.
Yeah, but that's 20 years from now. That'd be 20, that'd be 20 years from next week. I mean, from February, what, 14th, 18th, whatever date that we go to bond market or whatever date that we implement the service.
It would be up to future administrations to really, is it eight year buyback or 10?
It is.
No.
No.
What is it?
No.
The bond issue 20 years.
20 years, no buyback.
20 years bond, we're looking to refinance that or rebid that in about eight years.
Yeah, but there's no buyback. No buyback whatsoever. And we discussed that when we're talking about going to the bond market too. Would we have the ability to have a buyback? But I think the outcome of that was the ability to refinance after a certain number of years instead of having a buyback, you know?
Correct.
Okay. My option, you know, I thought buyback would be better, but in this case, I think we're looking at a refi. And at the end of 20 years, I mean, I don't think any of us will be here at the end of 20 years, you know, so that'll be up to the next administration. But if there was a need, like I told you, of public service, then does the next or the next administration or the next administration have the ability to untangle this? You know, so that's that.
It's an ordinance.
Yeah, that, you know, that's that's the biggest thing here. Do we have the ability?
Yeah, and keep in mind, it's fungible. The earmarking really just helps on this issue, the on the debt service. If even if it wasn't earmarked and you're just pulling it from general funded impact service, though, so the idea here was to have no negative impact on the general fund budget and all the services that we provide there or any negative impact on the capital budget. And so finding new revenue streams or using TIF to retire debt service, finding other ways of doing this rather than impacting services.
That's what I'm asking right now.
Okay.
That needs to be addressed.
And the last point was the the other piece was trying to find a way to demonstrate how the tourism dollars are going to help pay for the arena and segregating that into a fund that's paid primarily by tourism dollars and not citizen dollars was the other main focus on this. Because right now, you know, the the amount of citizens staying in hotel rooms is under than less than 1% of the patrons in Mobile's hotels are Mobiliens. So this lodging tax is being paid 99% plus by non-Mobiliens. So if we're trying to find a way to pay for the arena with non-Mobiliens money, this is the revenue to do it.
Thanks, Britain.
Mr. Reynolds, then Mr. Daze, and then Mr. Penn.
This comes down to why, I mean, that still hasn't been laid out, why it's necessary that we should or shall levy an additional tax to pay for debt service on the airport or to support airport operations as well as debt service that we likely won't realize until 10 years down the road for the Civic Center. Why is this required? And that that has not been answered to me and I'd like to know that and I'd like to hear from the airport as precisely why they need this $3 million allocated to them over the course of 10 years in order to get their project up and running or whatever it is, support their operations to the point that to to pay for or to demonstrate visitors paying for the airport and the Civic Center, we have that ability without raising taxes as well, that we can reallocate those funds currently in our existing allocation over to those projects if we so choose.
Sure, you'd be pulling them away from other projects. You could do that.
Well, we'd be pulling it from the general fund operating budget, 96% of which goes to, I mean, it goes to the general fund. I don't know where all that money goes, but there is certainly an opportunity to do that as well. So before I can say we we must, we shall levy this additional tax, I need to have a better understanding of why it's so imperative that we raise the tax to 10% from 8%, which does sort of fall in line with 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 other major cities. I've reviewed the list for the state and it's higher than a lot and but it falls within line of that. So I just need to understand why it's imperative that we raise this tax. I want to hear from the Civic Center and I want to hear what the implications of it are on the actual Civic Center because we're foregoing 10 years of this when we kind of need it the most. You know, we have this little separation or gap where we're doing interest only and that sort of stuff. I want to understand that.
Yeah, just just to touch the 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 rate increase, you know, right now, we're at 8%. Montgomery's at 11%. Birmingham is at 6.5%, but they also charge an additional $3 per night per room that goes straight to the city. So that would make that rate much higher than 6 and a half percent. Huntsville is at 9%, but they again charge an additional $2 per room night that goes directly to the city, which means that their effective rate would be higher than 10%. Gal Shores is at 10%, Orange Beach is at 10%, Daphne is at 6% and they charge an additional $2 per room night that goes straight to the city. So I'm not sure what other cities you were you were looking at that might that we might be higher than from a peer city perspective, but based on what we've done, this would put us in line and it's still some cases under what our peer cities are.
I would say, but then you got to add the TID 3%.
TID does not get. TID does not go to the city.
It doesn't go to the city at all.
Well, I mean, it's a tax levied, I'm, I'm not looking at it necessarily say just from the city's perspective and the revenue they're gaining. I'm looking at, you know, what fees are charged to somebody who books a room. And if you, you know, there's other cities that are, say, less, but then have another $3 or whatever that goes to the city. If you look at it from our perspective, we got, if we do this, we'd go 10% from the, the city, an additional, what, 1% from the county? Is that what they charge as well? 2% from the county, alright? And then another 3% in the TID in year five. So we're an effective rate of 15%, you know? So I think that has to be considered.
You would be at an effective rate of, uh, of, of about 16%, which would still be less than Birmingham, on par with Huntsville, same as Florence, same as Gulf Shores, same as Orange Beach.
So, so we are in agreement that this would be, uh, this would be a, a big lever that we're pulling. I just need to understand why we need to pull that lever right now. Could this be reserved when we have a better understanding of where we fall within the bond market for our major $300 million project? Um, and that we're foregoing 10 years of potential revenue to put towards. And it may be better off that we understand that better before we defer, say, 10 years. At 3 million, how do we come up with $3 million? To go to the civic center?
That's based on pro- projections of the hotel, hotel rooms that we currently have, the hotel rooms that are planned to come online, uh, and a projected proportional increase in, uh, in night stays. And I mean, David, you can talk in the specifics on what goes in your modeling.
I, I guess I'm not talking about how, how did we come up with $3 million that the airport needs? The number of $3 million, is, is that what their request was?
That was a request.
They're requesting that they need $3 million for some, you know, circumstance that we just don't understand as yet.
Yeah, their, their request was for $3 million. They were actually requesting it over a 20-year term. We said we were not wanting to go out over 20 years. Um, and it is towards finalizing, my understanding is it is towards finalizing the, uh, the, the terminal and costs associated with relocating the carrier, the, uh, the legacy commercial carriers from the existing airport to the downtown airport. But again, I can't speak for MAA.
Yeah, we need to hear from them. I think it's important that we hear from them and understand fully their situation and how we prioritize. I mean, these are major projects. How we prioritize, you know, this major project that the city has taken on, legacy project that's needed, and this other major project, how we allocate these funds and make sure that we're, we are protected here at the city with our $300 million project.
And I think the mayor's trying to get them here about 8 o'clock next Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Daze, then Mr. Penn, uh, his vice president has something, then back to Mr. Carroll, then we gonna go on to Madam Clark.
I don't want any, I want to make clear that my questions, uh, the questions I asked earlier don't indicate that I have any problem with this. I'm, I'm fully in favor of doing it. I think, uh, I, I think it's, you know, obviously it, it brings us up to a point where we're not in excess of other cities and, and I think we, I think, you know, I, I think we need to do it. I'm also not, I don't, also don't object to the uses that the money will be put to. I think our Convention Investors Bureau has done a excellent job under Mr. Clark's leadership. And I think we should continue to fund them. I'm happy to do that. Uh, I think that to the extent that we can provide additional revenues to the airport authority without impacting city services, we need to do that. Because all that's going to do is make sure that, uh, when people go out and buy tickets, the ticket price from Mobile is competitive with some of our competitors. And that is crucial to the whole airport project being successful over the, over the long period of time. And I'm also happy to see some of the money going to the, uh, arena project. Because again, the quicker we can get that, uh, that debt paid off, the better it is for the city. The fact of the matter is that, uh, we are going to build a new arena and we are building a new airport. That bridge has been crossed. And, and, or those bridges have been crossed. And now we need to put ourselves in a position where they can both be as successful as possible in the shortest possible term. And, and so I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to join in. Thank you, um, Councilman Daze for asking those, um, great questions. I think you, we needed to hear clarity and understanding and, um, um, and hopefully we can get on the same page and get the origins and the terminology all correct. I support this. Uh, one is because we're, we're pregnant right now. I mean, it's just, I mean, like, I mean, we at a point where, uh, we're about to give birth. I mean, we can look right across the street right now. It's no going backwards. And if we want to grow and be a premier city in the state of Alabama in this region, we have to have funds to be able to do that. And right now, we're not even, honestly, when you look at the, the funds that we, we give to market our city, the, the great city of Mobile, we're, we're not even giving enough money for that. So where are these funds going to come from? And so if we pull, and I understand my colleague's perspective, but in the past, we already given the airport money. So if we don't put any streams right now, later on, we probably gonna have to give them money again. And where that funds is gonna come from? So if we don't put anything in place to take care of that, then we're gonna keep pulling from general funds and we're gonna put ourself in a position where we're not gonna be able to do the things to serve our constituents. Um, I think this is a great opportunity to do both. To still be able to give the services to our, our constituents as well as provide resources, um, to the airport and the civic center. We want people coming to the city of Mobile. And the only way for that to happen is to have lower ticket prices. And then we're gonna build an arena there and how we're gonna market it. We want people to come for shows. We gotta have funds to be able to do that. And so, um, I, I could be Mr. Clark and everyone from that team, um, for the work that they're doing, utilizing the, the resources that they have, but we need more. And this give us the opportunity to do it without taxing our constituents. Only 1%, less than 1% stays in a hotel. Um, and if we wanna, we always talk about the great things happening in Huntsville, the great things happening in Birmingham, well, let's make Mobile great. They put money behind tourism. They put money behind their events. So let's do the same thing here in the city of Mobile. But I understand your concerns.
One, one second, Mr. Reynolds. Vice President.
Oh, um, thank you, Mr. President. I understand where, uh, Mr. Reynolds is coming from. And because there was some confusion today, I think we look forward to hearing more information, especially from the airport authority and getting things kinda cleared up so that everybody is able to understand exactly how this is going to work. So with that, I agree. But I also agree with what both of my colleagues have said. The best way at the end of the day to do this is to make sure that the citizens of the city of Mobile are not negatively impacted. So that these funds go to pay for things we've got to pay for anyway, as we know, and that we should be paying for, for Visit Mobile to continue attracting the tourists here. But we want to make sure that the city's services are not negatively impacted. We want to make sure that we continue operating and continue to have our capital funds as we have been. So that extra stream of money going to pay for the arena, out to the airport, I think it's a good way to be able to siphon that off and to use it. And otherwise, you know, we'd be looking for money somewhere, right?
One minute, Mr. Carroll, one minute, Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, well, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, after that, one minute to Mr. Reynolds. I want to go back to the, uh, previous ordinance too about the mayor's salary. I think I've told y'all how I felt on that and we just bypassed it today with no conversation. I'm glad to hear that all of you now are, uh, hearing me when I talk about, uh, without lessening the impact to our citizens when we do this. That's the most important thing. Knowing that we are going to be a little, uh, I should say cash duress, which we're not, because we're going to be able to meet our debt service. But being able to do the small things that we've continued to do over and over and over again throughout these last four years is going to be paramount to make, making sure that our citizens still feel government the way that they have been feeling government. At our level, people don't care about anything else other than what's in front of their house when it comes down to it. And if we can't respond to those things because we're at a position where all we could do is provide the same level of services that we have over the past four years, then we're, we're gonna be in a little bit of trouble. So when we talk about that excess revenue going to the, uh, uh, civic center or the airport, then we need to be also making sure that we have an additional revenue going to the people so that they feel that we're still continuing to take care of them. I am 100% like I told you before, I'm okay with doing this. Like I told y'all in the committee meeting, I'm okay. But I also told you in the committee meeting, my biggest concern was is how are we gonna redirect that extra money? And today is the first time you guys have literally told us, after I brought it to the mayor's attention that day, where is that extra money going? All of a sudden, okay, well, we'll have a meeting with Scott and we'll talk about this and we'll decide it. But you guys decided before it ever came back to us. So this is the first time I'm ever hearing it today and where it's going. I would have liked to see that money go to the people of this city. But at some point, if we can untie that and get it out to the people if it needs to be done, then I'm okay with that. But the next administration needs to be aware that we can untangle that when needed to get it out to the right people if we need to do that.
All right, uh, Mr. Daze, um, uh, Ms. Flavonia had reached out to the airport authority. And Ms. Flavonia, if you can reach out to Mr. Daze, we could just put this on the financial meeting. But shooting for nets Tuesday at 8:00 a.m. if possible, okay?
And, Miss President?
Yeah.
Before we move on, we, we just cruise right over the mayor's increase in salary up to 195, which is on today's agenda as the first read. I don't know where you guys are, but I'm saying this to the general public. I want to know where the general public is. Uh, my email address is council2@cityofmobile.org. My phone number is 251-404-4107. Text me and let me know what you think. Cause I want to hear what the general public's thinking about this. The mean salary in the city of Mobile is $51,000. $51,000. And we're about to move a mayor's salary up to $200,000. It's a lot to think about. An increase may be warranted, but I want to hear from the general public. So I just gave you my numbers and my email address. Please, let me hear what the general public thinks about that type of increase. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Woods.
Um, also, they, you know, just to add on to what Councilman Carroll's, um, saying about the, the ordinance that's being introduced. Um, uh, $65,000, what the Zogby Lines Act, um, you know, that, that lots of times the administration uses and the council uses to battle back and forth. But $65,000 is what the original salary was for the mayor. Um, obviously, I don't know if, uh, I guess contemplation has been included over the years, but, uh, at the moment, 125 is what the mayor makes. Um, whenever you adjust that for time value money, also inflation, um, that gets you a little bit over the 215, uh, $215,000 mark, you know, 65 to that, to that number. Um, 195, uh, you know, really, um, that number comes from taking, uh, that with, with thoughtful consideration, um, taking, uh, all of that into consideration. So I, that's, that's the other side of the, the coin on this. And, and again, I, I too would love to hear the feedback. Thank you.
Madam Clark.
Consent resolution is being introduced 31068. Authorize the mayor to apply accept and receive for grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation in support of the protect grant program. No local match. 40069, declare the structure at 325 East I-65 Service Road. Public nuisance in order, demolished and secured. 40070 through 40079 are fixing the cost of demolition of structures. 60080, 081 and 082 are approving award a special bonus to firefighter of the month, officer of the month, administrative services employee of the month. 37106 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to Graham Bistro on St. Michael Street. CIP resolutions being introduced 08083. Approved purchase order to TRP Construction Group for roadway thermal striping for traffic engineering. 21084, authorize contract with Clean Earth of Alabama for household hazardous waste collection event. $160,000.
Mr. Reynolds.
I've got a question. Why is this coming out of CIP of, I guess each, each of our districts is $160,000? 21084, Clean Earth of Alabama, household hazardous waste collection.
Um, it is, uh, funded, uh, from stormwater fee and it's just a capital account. So we're, got the contract for the consultant on the agenda is what this, um, is. But it's not coming out of capital for anybody's district.
But it's listed under CIP resolutions. I guess the stormwater fee goes to CIP?
Uh, Mr. Gregor, you?
No, I, I think it's just because it's being used citywide. That's probably why all of our names are listed rather than specific amount coming out of each of our CIP.
Anyone else? Madam Clark.
Resolution is being introduced 01085. Authorized agreement with CSX Transportation for surface and signal, signals at Shipyard Road, $47,500.
Mr. President.
Vice President.
There are, um, several resolutions on here that are under the $50,000 mark. And so for those that are, if you all would agree to go ahead and take those on a first read, we could get some things moving along today if possible. Okay. All right.
01086, authorized agreement with Global, Global Spectrum. OVG 360 to manage the new Mobile Arena. 010.
One second, Madam Clark.
This is the, uh, this is the first time that y'all have seen, uh, the management agreement for the new arena. So they have representation documents here today as well. So just to make sure there's questions that you guys can sit here and have an agreement. How else can we do that today? And, you know, the specific questions for you, if you cover this as well. If you don't, I'm happy to sit back.
Not today, I don't think.
Yeah. So not, not today, let's get it.
Okay. Well, we will, um, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that there's going to be some, uh, questions now that the, the document is out there. So if you have any between now and the next, the next meeting, I'm happy to answer those and we can fill them all for next week.
Carroll, be good.
Yeah, I'm okay. I, I, I think, um, aren't these in the list of the things that we need to take up immediately?
Well, we, we can, we're, we are set up to have this carried over, um, for one week. But the anticipation is that this is voted on, um, next week.
Okay, I thought it was anticipation of last week for this week.
We, we had.
That our, so there wasn't a hard, it wasn't a hard stop.
I had built in an extra, extra week just in case. Yeah, so the snow week didn't, but we're, we're bumping up against it now.
Okay.
I've got one question is, what's the term of this contract?
This is a, this is a 22-year management agreement. And, you know, again, I'm, I'm happy to get into it. The, uh, the term is for 22 years. The, uh, the, the cash contribution required from OVG coming into this is 15 million paid in two 7.5 million dollar increments, once in 2026, one in 2027, so they can be used during the construction of the, uh, of the arena. This agreement was, is structured as a, uh, fee plus incentive type agreement, which allows us to get to the bond market as a tax exempt financing. As you recall, when we originally started this project, we were looking at more of a revenue sharing model, but those models did not allow for taxes that financing. So we've switched it to the, uh, fee plus incentive model. The only guaranteed payment, uh, for OVG is a, is the $400,000 a year fee as a management fee. The rest of the compensation is set up under a, uh, revenue sharing model that it projects out over the, the, the life of the term for the city to about 55 point, 53.5 million over the life of the term. The revenue model is a sliding scale, uh, model that's being used. With, you know, the annual revenues coming in, anything under 4 million, 95% of that goes to the city, 5% goes to the OVG. And then tiers up at every $2 million increments. And then once you hit the $8 million in gross revenue number coming in, then the, the net, the net figure on that comes out to be 70% to the city and 30% to OVG. That's how the sliding scale is set up. The other, other revenue components in the agreement is that we've established a $4.5 million, uh, fund that will be reserved for, uh, capital improvements for the facility, uh, broken down through short-term and long-term. And there is a, also a incentive fund, um, set up in the agreement to be paid out of OVG's, uh, sponsorship revenues, um, to be used with regard to the location of a, of a hockey second ice facility, uh, in Mobile, which would be their second ice, second training facility separate apart from the arena. So the total compensation, projected compensation we're looking at is about 73.85 million. million in revenue coming in through the, through this contract with, with OBG and the operations of the, of the arena. A few bullet points on top of that. The, the other, the other factor is if we were to some reason be outkick our coverage when it comes to sponsorship revenues and exceed some of the other similarly situated venues, anything over two and a half annually, two, two-point-five million annually in sponsorship sales come straight into the city, it doesn't run through the, the revenue model for the arena itself. They've committed to at least a thirty percent DBE participation rate for the project. There's a carve-out for the city use of the facility. There's also a, a carve-out and preferential use for Mardi Gras during the Mardi Gras period. But all that's laid out in the, in the agreement. So as you go through it, we can flesh out those further, but those are probably the, the high points for today.
Ms. President.
Ms. Penn.
Thank you, Ms. President. And thank you, Bren, for sharing out. You answered a lot of questions that I had. The only question, I have one, is that in the past, and I don't know if you, maybe the administration know this, William might know it because he know a lot from the past.
Excellent recall. I know. Because it's not, some of y'all getting it.
You're right.
So, but, one of the things is, like, management, have in the past any group ever gave this much in investment with manage, you know, with a management contract?
For the city?
Yeah.
No.
Pretty good.
Do you have something, Mr. Woods?
Yes, so, I guess the effective date of this contract, would that be post any changes that need to be made to the design, if any needed to be made?
There, there is a, there is a provision in here with regard to, to design and FFNE, that OBG has a, a, an opportunity to be engaged in that process. And just so y'all know, up to this point, the design team with Populous, Gobmills and Kaywood and Volker have worked extensively with OBG to make sure that the arena elements important to OBG and those arena elements are the ones important for revenue are being addressed. There are certain requirements under this contract that, that have to be met in terms of the, the minimum seating, the minimum, minimum lodge boxes, the minimum suites. So any, any change in plans that would deviate below those, we would have to, we would have to revisit with OBG, but as of, as of right now, we don't have any of that anticipated. If there are any changes on FFNE outside of the, the, the list, a potential FFNE that'll be attached or referenced to this agreement, then OBG will have input on that. Because again, a lot of what we're learning about the best, best FFNE pieces in the arena are coming from OBG's direction, because they have done these all over.
I'm just thinking about our favorite or my least favorite word of value engineering, if any of that has to occur.
We got Volker here, I think talk about that.
Sam, is Sam back there?
Sam's here.
Yeah. Mr. President, one thing, the council did not have a chance to see the final design of what was being bid out. What's the bid date next week, the fourth?
Opening on the eleventh?
Eleventh, the fourth?
It's actually the fourteenth now. The, there's a lot of questions coming in from the developers until they're, we're trying to get them all filled, but it's fourteen.
So we're going to issue an addendum. The, the other thing is that, what is twenty-seven additive alternates in the bid documentation that may take us up? They're all additive, so they're going to be an increase to whether the bid number is based on what the base bid comes back at. And, and I'm, I'm hoping that those additive alternates are in conjunction with the base bid being projected to be lower than what is estimated by this council to be. The other thing is, is that if the bid date, that's just one question. The other thing is, if the bid date has changed to the fourteenth, what does that do to our window going into our, uh, bond market? Because we need to know what that number is to go into the bond market immediately. Does that push our whole sequence back a week? Does it change the timing? Does it do anything to what we're looking, what we're looking from, from the bond market? None of those questions are being asked, and I think this is the first time that the council has actually heard that we're pushing back a week.
The, I'll address the technical questions. The bonding will have to be addressed by somebody else. But first, the alternates, they're all add alternates, there's only eight.
Eight, okay. Thought there was eleven, but okay.
Okay, so, so those will be, you know, of course, they're, they're set up by law to be additive in succession, so depending on the bid price for the base bid. Then what was your other, the other question?
It, it was more towards the delay. Sam, I've gotten, and I responded to a few people by saying that I'm not part of the administration and have no, no, uh, ability to respond to what the request was as far as bid submission. Comes along some of the same questions that were asked at the pre-bid about submission of base bid and then all the additional information that's asked for with the base bid. Did y'all make a decision on that?
Yeah, the bids will come in, e- each bidder will submit one envelope with their base bid, another envelope with their pricing on the alternates. They'll be opened at the same time. So, and then prior to bid opening, you know, we'll announce, you know, how, how the basis of award will be made. The, the reason we pushed the bid date is quite frankly, we've got a thousand and sixty-two drawings, and so we've been getting a lot of questions. And we want to make sure, once we respond to those questions, that the bidders have ample time to, you know, account for the responses in their bid. If we held the February seventh date, we would probably get a significantly higher bid, so we made the decision to pu- push that bid date by one week.
One second. Counsel, we got to look, look at, it's ten twenty. I mean, we only had ten minutes left before ten-thirty meeting. If it's not present, and you can talk to them offline, do so. But we need to get back stuff on agenda.
Important. What does that do to our calendar as far as bond market and all the other things that we have? Does it change anything? Does it put us in a, in a hard date position where there are things we're going to have to approve that day as opposed to having a week layover? Which we can't have now.
That's right. We'll, we'll have to do it on the eighteenth, but we will know what the bid prices are at that point.
Okay. Did you hear something? All right. All right, Madam Clerk.
Zero one zero eighty-seven, authorized agreement with National Maritime Museum of the Gulf. Zero eight zero eighty-eight, approved purchase order to Civic Plus for annual subscription of agenda management software, twenty-one thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and five cents. Zero eight zero eighty-nine, approved purchase order to Sand Some Equipment for garbage truck for Parks Rec, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Zero eight zero ninety, approved purchase order to Alberta Farmers Co-op for fence panels. MPD Mounted Unit, eighteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Zero eight zero ninety-one, approved purchase order to Emergency Equipment Professional for aerial ladder truck, one million seven hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. Twenty-one zero ninety-two, authorized contract with Gorham Air Conditioning for HVAC upgrades at the Cruise Terminal, ninety-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Thirty-one zero ninety-three, authorized DECA CDBG Local Recovery Plan Budget Categories, fifty-three million one hundred and forty-nine thousand thirty-seven dollars.
President.
Ms. Reynolds.
By passing this resolution, I don't know exactly what we're going to spend this money on. I know that there's these categories, but I don't know precisely how this money's going to be spent.
Yeah, so the housing portion is multifamily only rental. A deck has restricted us to not do any single-family housing because they had a direct program. So that's roughly thirty-two and some change million. The balance of it, a little over twenty million dollars is the, the HUD terminology is public infrastructure, public facility, but it's not exactly that because there's a lot of restrictions on the grant funding. The bulk of that's going to be put into the demolition of the Michigan Avenue former public housing project, so that the city can assist EMA, FEMA, you know, public works to have a place, their housing first have a place there to have a response area for future disasters.
Do you know specific projects for this thirty-two million dollars?
We did an RFP in November. We, we held the proposals till, they closed them December ninth. We've held those proposals, we're scoring them out. We have, right now we have three nine percent tax credits, which is the real urgency we're under. Those developers have to turn those applications into the state by the twentieth of February, and they need a letter from us with a conditional commitment of funds. So we have, we have three viable projects on that. The rest of it would probably be with the bond system with the state also. And there's, there's a little bit of a time crunch, time crunch on that because this is probably the first year the state's going to hit their bond capacity for multifamily housing. So we're looking at that and a bunch of apartments going across the city.
Ms. President. And I, Jamie, what's the time crunch? Because I think we might need to have a meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's, we can't, we need to get letters out no later than the eleventh of February, so that the developers have that reasonable expectation of being able to include it in their packet to the state. It's not a timeline we control. It's, Alabama Housing Finance Authority has that. The other issue with the snowstorm, I'm, I'm going to be at a conference next week, so.
And this is-
You don't-
This is for multifamily housing?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we fought with them quite a bit.
Does it have to consent to a QCT? Or can it be anywhere?
It can be anywhere. It's, it's more, you know, we, we set up the funding for potential projects, it's more the AHFA has their guidelines of where it can go, it's the scoring system that'll dictate a lot of it to us.
Have we written a proposal or a program as to where we'd like to see them develop these multifamily houses?
Yeah, I mean, the, the need is where the storm path was. So we've, our, it's a hundred and six-page-long planning document. It's got, towards the back of it, in the seventies, something page, there's an overlay of all those maps on top of each other. And if it hits, I think it's three out of five categories, it goes to a higher priority assessment for the disaster response.
So it's the map I've already, it's the map I've seen already that kind of goes like this?
Well, they're overlaid on top of each other, though.
Yeah.
So there's, there's, you know, all the impacts are combined between the two storms. And so if you have so many items that touched, it gets a higher ratio, basically.
I don't think the whole council has seen those maps. Can you get those maps?
Yeah, I'll, I'll re-sign the plan, I'll identify the page numbers on.
Yeah, because it affects almost the whole, every district.
The entire city was deemed the hardest-hit area, but the deck has gone beyond that and then went to the most hardest-hit area, so we've identified since tracks that are harder hit.
Yeah.
You're saying there were three viable projects?
There's three viable nine percent tax credit projects. We have, we have more bond projects, but the timeline we're under crunch for right the second is the nine percents. The, the bond is, like I said, getting squeezed also because the capacity at the state level, but the nine percents have a hard February twentieth applications have to be in deadline.
Have we written a proposal for the nine percent tax credit yet?
It's, it's not ours. The developers write the proposal, we just give them a conditional commitment letter.
Well, the laws have changed on those, and, you know, each county now only gets two nine percent tax credit awards per year.
Right.
So they're extremely competitive. So, I mean, how many, how many developers do we actually have writing for these now?
We've got one that is a CHODO project that splits it off as a separate category, so you can't get the two per county.
Right.
And then there's two that are not CHODO projects. All three of them are viable to us. It depends on which one can get to the state scoring system.
Sounds like the one has a better chance of a higher score.
Yeah, the CHODO has the highest score. It, it actually will score about a ninety-nine. The other two are going to score very closely.
The likelihood of a win?
Yeah.
What's the likelihood of a win?
The, the CHODO one is pretty well guaranteed unless they mess up their documentation. It is guaranteed as you can get on a tax credit project.
Mr. President, I, I'm not, I'm kind of perplexed on ninety-three, ninety-four, and ninety-five. Certainly, we want the money. We can go ahead, not today, but next week. Certainly, we could go ahead and pass these items and wonder where the money, or work out where the money's going to go later on, but it isn't like we don't want the money.
We could actually pass it to them.
But we have on it. I mean, once we vote to the categories we've seen, we, we don't have any other input. I mean, it's, it's only what you get.
You gotta turn the money away?
Hold, 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 hold on one second, counsel. Hold up. I think the Councilman Penn had requested a meeting, and this might have to require, Mr. Robert, you said you're going to be out of town this week?
I'll be at a conference next week.
All Monday through Friday?
Yep.
Counsel, this might have to require a special committee meeting this week, is, because right now we're looking at time. Thursday-
I'm going to be out the rest of the week, but y'all go ahead without me.
Vice President?
Vice President?
Ms. Reynolds?
What's that?
By having a committee meeting on probably Thursday or Friday this week.
In one of my committees?
Probably being untied, untied.
Be entitled.
Mr. Penn, I mean, Ms. Woods?
I mean, Thursday, Thursday morning's best for me. I don't know what, what y'all's.
All right, and Mr. Carroll, is Thursday morning good for you?
I believe so. Let me, I'm just looking now. That, that Isom Clement Park thing I have to do, I think it's either Wednesday or Thursday morning.
That's Wednesday tomorrow.
It's Wednesday morning, okay, I'm fine.
That's, yes, you, Mr. Carroll, hold. Mr. Penn, let's go ahead and you shoot for Thursday. Let's try to do a committee meeting on Thursday, okay?
Question, Mr. President. The likelihood of this money being stopped by the federal government is-
Britton, before I speak more to that, but as far as I'm, my understanding of the memo that went out last night, this is already encumbered with the state, because it's, it's, it's an unusual circumstance where they didn't directly fund us, they funded the state to fund us.
Right.
So it's already under contract with federal government at the state level, this would be a supplemental contract to that, so I don't think it's in any effect.
So it doesn't affect us now?
Not for this.
So the rush that we were perceived to be doesn't exist.
For this funding, the timeline is solely the, the Housing Finance Authority deadline is what we're looking at.
And the other funding?
The other funding, Britton talked about one.
Britton, the other funding?
Correct. Thirty-one ninety-five.
Right. Yes.
Yeah. So the thirty-one ninety-five funding, that's the Senator Shelby Downtown Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, that, that funding has not been allocated yet. This needs to be passed so that we can send this to HUD, so that we can start the process of actually getting the agreement in place with HUD. So until we have the resolution to send to HUD authorizing us to receive the funds, we can't, we, we can't proceed with the actual grant application with HUD. Now, as y'all saw, the, and, and executive letter went out last night with regard to department heads regarding a stay for all contracts, grants, everything, that's across the board, other than Medicaid and Social Security and maybe one other thing. That was anticipated, not sure yet, at least walking in here, if that's a ninety-day hold, a hundred-and-twenty-day hold, a sixty-day hold. But it's, it's a part of their review process, they, they said they were going to do coming in. Once that review process is complete, then, then they will proceed according to whatever directives they have there. The, the bigger issue here is these are, these are congressionally-directed funding. This is a congressionally-directed project from the FY twenty-three Appropriations Act from Senator Shelby before he left. So the, the real, the, the other deadline we have here is that they're under CR through March fourteenth. And so as the, the CR process continues and the, the potential there is a likelihood of any unallocated funds could potentially be clawed back. So this, this particular item is not something we can really set on very long, because we, we have to, it's taking us a long time to get to this position with HUD where we can actually start the, the grant agreement discussion.
How much work has to be done after the council takes action in order for us to get everything to HUD? And how much time is that going to take?
Just based on the back and forth we've seen so far with HUD, probably going to be a couple of few months.
So-
Because there are required documents and there's a new, new platform they're requiring us to-
So if we pass this next week, we still stand a chance of getting caught up in a clawback situation?
Potentially, potentially.
Yeah, right, right the second, the, the hold is what it is. The current timeline associated is Sept- the end of September of this year, is the end of federal fiscal year.
So we're in no danger of loss?
I think once they review it, this is not going to be one that they end up doing anything with, but there's, you know.
Best guess.
Okay, all right. Madam Clerk.
Sixty zero ninety-six through sixty one oh three, authorizing settlement agreement and release of claims. Zero one one zero seven, authorized intergovernmental agreement with Mobile County Commission for pre-trial ankle monitoring program. Call for public hearings. Forty-one one oh four, call for public hearing to consider vacation of city right-of-way